Certified of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
We will call meeting to order. We do have a forum. I would take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute. Second, motion in a second, any other discussion? All favor eye?
Eye.
Or eye?
Oppose?
Motion carry. Rich Brown, good morning.
See. Sorry. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Um, few things this morning, um, a week or so ago, we had received our quote from the DOT on the salt for the winter. Our low, the low quote was eighty-seven dollars and ten cents a ton. We ordered eighteen hundred tons, we're looking at a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and change there for some salt for next year. Just to kind of keep you abreast of what's going on there. The wind tower project progress, um, I think this le- this week, we approved their, uh, their, uh, road stabilization plans. They're gonna be doing cement stabilization on the roads via the, instead of the nine to twelve inches of rock, which is just fine by me. This, the cement stabilization will be a good option for us. Think they're gonna start on, uh, on Grayling's Road first. Um, probably this week. Um, I just, they wanted to know how to handle it. I said, you talk to every landowner on that road, tell them what's gonna happen, when? And how we're gonna keep you in and out, get them in and out. Um, they might wanna close the road. They wanted to close the roads, you know, while they do the whole thing. I said, you still gotta keep the locals in and out, so I don't know what their plan is quite yet on that, but, uh, that's what they've got going on with that project. They continue to, you know, blade the roads daily behind all their construction traffic and whatnot, so, um, I try to drive there on my days that I come over here, I try to drive the route a little bit, see how things are going. The bridge down south by, uh, Basic Materials on three hundred and forty-second Street, that one, uh, they've got the, the, I think they've got the caissons, uh, put in for their, they drilled the rock sockets, and I think they've got the, I don't think they got the piling in yet, but that progresses, is, it's moving forward, and then, uh, there'll probably be a delay between when the, uh, when they're done with their foundation work and when the, the box beams get built. They've had a lot of, uh, questions and delays and some of the, the mixed design stuff on the box beams, but, um, being a low-volume road, it shouldn't be too big of an issue. There might be a two or three-week delay between, like I said, when the footings are done and when they bring the box beams in, so. The, uh, we had, uh, a supplier brought in a new Dura-Patcher, so if you see the guys using this bike, great, this bright green lime-green machine. They've got a new Dura-Patcher they wanted us to test out, so we'll be doing something with a new one. We didn't buy it, just so you know, obviously something flashy and new, we didn't buy it, we're just testing it for them. Last week, we had our, uh, our pre-construction meeting for our HMA projects. They're gonna look at starting late July, early August. Um, so we've got some time yet, so we, I mean, they'll be done before harvest ever shows up, so we'll be good in that respect, too. Thank, uh, Mark and AJ, I think you guys had some questions on some different locations with junk in the right-of-way. Um, I went up on Finch. It looked to me, Mark, up on Finch, that, I don't know if they're moving stuff around. When I went up there, there were a couple items in the right-of-way, but they had brand-new tow straps or lifting straps on it, like they're moving stuff around, getting ready to haul stuff out, maybe? So I don't know where to handle that yet, but I haven't been up there today to see if anything's been moved out yet, but they're kind of still back on the right-of-way, but it looked like they were just freshly moved to, I don't know, it looked to me like they were trying to get some stuff taken care of, but we'll just keep an eye on it for the next couple of days and see if it's not moved. And then AJ down in Grafton, uh, might talk to that landowner there, too. It's, I think it's in the city limits, but I still told him to get the stuff out of the right-of-way, and like I maybe told you earlier, he's somebody we dealt with in Mitchell County, too. So I just said, we won't write you a letter if you get the stuff behind the power lines, so I'll let the city take care of it from there if it's a nuisance, so.
Yeah. Well, kind of what I told him, too, was we'll keep it out of the right-of-way, because that's the county road coming through. Otherwise, it's their baby, because it's city road upstairs, so.
So, that's about what I got for an update. We did send out our rock run information last week, so we'll get that this week, so that we can get that rock run running. We're gonna keep the, uh, the northeast corner where the wind towers, we're gonna kind of keep that rock out of the system for now, because there's gonna be so many roads they're running on and maintaining. We'll keep our traffic out of their way, and then if it comes to be later on, or maybe even the spring, I mean, we'll, we'll be maintaining it as we need to on roads that they're not running, but I think that for the benefit of everybody, we'll just stay out of the way and let them progress and let them beat up their own rock that they're putting down, so. I do have one thing I gotta, and I think I know how we're gonna handle this, but just so you guys know, too, that I received a bill in the mail for somebody who had to clean rock out of their ditch from the winter, and of course, we don't really pay for people to clean rock out of their ditches, so in case you get an angry phone call or whatever, um, we just, we don't try to put rock in the ditch, and we don't pay to clean it up, it's the right-of-way, and, uh, we don't intend for it to happen, but, uh, just the nature of winter, I guess, so just so you guys are aware of it. I won't give the name over the, in the meeting, but, uh, anyway, I'm just gonna deny the claim like we should. We don't pay for anybody else's rock to be cleaned up, so. And I know that, uh, you guys have some other things to talk about later on that involve me as far as conservation, so I'll just kind of hang out here if you don't have any other questions.
No, just, they, as long as the wind company stays in touch, I think Grayling said, can't remember if it was two things, he's got feed coming in, he's got cattle going out, so hopefully they're.
And when I got, I talked to Grayling for about an hour on Friday, and he was very pleasant, and, uh, just, I said, just keep in touch with me so I can make sure that they are aware. He said, the, the feed's coming in and, uh, on Wednesday, and so I let them know the schedule, and then he won't be having goat cattle out. He, he says his cattle go out on Mondays, so I said, by Monday, let's just see where I said, start on this end, so he can get, or on the, on the east side of the road, so he can get, they're gonna start this week, get that part done, so they can get in and out, and then I think everything's fine. But I told Grayling to stay in touch with me, so I can keep the schedule moving, too, so. That being with anybody, not specifically him, but if anybody had their request.
Right. Yeah, I know I just had a couple of things he was gonna do this week, and he was, you know, that's why I wanted the road up to snow, so I get it. Appreciate it.
No, we had a pleasant, pleasant conversation, and everything's good, so.
No, I just was concerned, so, that's good.
Good. Anything else? Alright, thanks, Rich.
I met with, uh, Tim Specker, and we looked at up on, uh, five hundred street, being, I'm not really sure what section, anyone, they're putting the, the road kind of right over one of the main tile lines that come up there. And, uh, I said, we have no problem if you put the tile line there, but I says, if you check across the tile, I said, I think it's about an eighteen inch. This is gonna have a lake, it's gonna be worth, in which it, either go ahead and reroute the tile?
One of the turbine roads goes there?
Yes, one of the turbine roads, okay. It's up on the end of the ditch up there. Joel was kind enough, we got some maps, because they didn't have the Deer Creek watershed, it's not on the beacon. And they didn't know that those roads were, the tile lines were even in there. And Joel's kind enough, got the big map down, and got some, and I got that to him, so they're aware of plus the new Deer Creek watershed lines are off there.
Okay. Any idea on the depth on that, though?
Oh, it should be about seven foot deep, six, seven foot deep.
We're gonna cross it.
That would be parallel.
Paralleling?
It's right off the end of the ditch, um, that'd be on east, west of Tom Grasslands, there's a section line there, it's actually, it's only, I think it's a mile line. The tile kind dumps into the end of the ditch, I call it the flatless ditch.
Yep.
And it goes straight north for waste, then it branches off and goes northwest, then it branches off, crosses back into the Flatness property, then goes straight north up to, across the side on the street.
Okay, well, we don't.
But that, the part of the lower end of it, that's where it ends around top.
Can't be right on top of it, though, you know, either, but.
Well.
They'll have to relocate it, or we'll.
I said, well, I said, we gotta have a problem with it building on top of it, but it's got a pool.
Right, exactly.
He says, okay.
Yeah.
So he's, he's aware of it.
Okay.
His neighbors know about it?
Yeah.
As well, I mean.
That's the biggest thing, is that.
No, I was informed by Jim Crow.
Oh, okay.
Jim calls him.
Okay, as long as the neighbors know, and.
Yeah.
If they're gonna understand, it doesn't affect their drainage, basically.
Well, well, I mean, some breaks is good.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Because that, that tile line comes all the way up. It crosses, uh, Parker Avenue, way up to the north. This, this goes a long ways. And back across by the understreet. Anyway, they're aware of it, and thanks, Joel, for getting that map out.
That was Russ that did most of it, I just.
Well, I know, he did that, Russ. I'm still missing my yellow map over there.
I, I claim no knowledge, so.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay, thanks, Rich. Any drainage? Nothing, no drainage claims, nothing? Okay, regular claims? Uh, windworks, batcoves, Melissa? Two, four, six. Actually, it's the four, six, I'm.
I unmute, yeah? I forgot to unmute myself.
Are you this morning?
Um.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
I'm just, um, working on the, some of the chores and stuff, so, um, needs to be done hopefully by the end of the month, and other than that, I'm in the office.
Good, good, sounds good. Um, I forgot to get ahold of you last week. Do I still need to come sign some paperwork?
Um, not that I know of. I sent you and Bill an email, and, um, I didn't receive a reply, so I'm, I'm just, I'm assuming, I'll call Carla and follow up with her, but I'm assuming that what I sent was good enough.
Okay, that sounds good, so, perfect. Alright, anything else?
Nope.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
Bye.
Alright, next, uh, resolution supporting the closing of Keenan's Quarry and Worth County Lake. Um, Jim Hanson, wanna give us, fill us in just a little bit, um, on this decision that we're supporting?
Yeah, so with Keenan's Quarry and Worth County Lakes closing, the resolution, my board passed the resolution last Thursday night. But the backstory on it is, we delayed park opening due to all the COVID stuff here this spring. May twenty-sixth, the day after Memorial Day, we opened Keenan's Quarry. We opened Keenan's Quarry just because we are concerned of the safety issue of people parking on the road. At that time, we were open to foot traffic only, and Memorial Day, we had thirty cars parked on the road, and people walking in to use the park, and so we thought, rather than having the mess on the road, we'd open the park and have the mess inside, so our guys could clean it up. We weren't dealing with the roadway and everything like that. Starting that week, we had an influx of people that we've never seen before at Keenan's. I know on several occasions, we did car counts in the parking lot throughout the workday, and there were, at times, up to three hundred vehicles in the parking areas at Keenan's. And I've been talking, from the di- from day one of opening, the sheriff and I had kind of been talking daily about if it got to be too much for our guys to manage, or too much for his guys to manage, that we would, you know, close things back down until we could actually get the situation better under control. Last Thursday, I believe it was, we had a meeting with myself, the sheriff, Rich, uh, emergency management, public health, the fire department from Northwood, and trying to think of who else was there. Mark was there. And through that conversation, we decided that, you know, with trying to meet CDC guidelines for the amount of people that we can have in one place in group gatherings, and then also just the extra extracurricular activities, I'll call them, that were going on there, the drinking and whatnot. It, it just became unsafe for our staff, for the sheriff's staff, and it became a burden on our local fire and rescue, and so that's kind of how we came to this conclusion. I guess if, Dan, if you have anything you want to chime in on with that, just brief update, you can, but.
No, I think you summed it up pretty good. You know, the only thing is, we're, we're looking at taking a short time here to try and reevaluate and see where we can go. You know, back in the day, we used to have a park host out there, we had Dean who was certified. I think there is some things we can do different out there. Uh, we talked over park user fees and that, but we don't want to see it closed the whole time, we want to get it reopened, but we want to do it safely and make sure everybody's safe out there, including our own family.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. After talking with Jim a little bit last week, well, it's kind of, it's turned into a very chaotic thing. And I'm not sure we want that kind of, uh, liability going on out there. It's already getting tough enough liability as it is for just the regular folks, but.
I guess, you know, Mark was part of the meeting, but for AJ and Ken, you guys weren't part of the meeting, and, you know, I don't know who I've talked to and who I haven't talked to briefly, but in a normal summer, a busy day for us is maybe two hundred people. This summer, for the two and a half weeks that we are open, we were having between a thousand and three thousand people a day is what we're estimating come and go from the park. I know that's hard to wrap your head around, but when you, when you're counting three hundred cars at, at one time, the people aren't there the whole day. The crowd shows up at ten o'clock, and they stay until the park closes at nine-thirty, and the sheriff can attest to it. For every two cars that come in, two cars go out. I mean, it's, it's pretty steady traffic flow the whole day, and they're not coming with one person in the car, they're coming with, you know, a carload, they're coming with three to five people in almost every vehicle that comes and goes, so it, it's hard to wrap your heads around that kind of traffic, but it's, it, it was really is more than, is more than we could handle, and more than the sheriff's office could handle it. It just, the people management just got to be too much. We were spending, between the three of us outdoor workers, we were spending probably eight to ten hours every day in the park, and we still couldn't keep things under control.
We had the same call volume for a full year and a week and a half that we have out there.
Wow. Never would have imagined little Keenan's Quarry was
that popular.
That popular place, but evidently, it's the only swimming hole in about forty, fifty, sixty-mile radius.
Hundred-mile radius, huh?
Well, and, you know, the, for the public health part, some of the distance, some of these people are coming. It, that's what kind of scares me a little bit, too, is that, you know, I know things are loosening up guideline-wise and reopening-wise, but the majority of our usership is coming from Austin and Rochester, but we have had, I've talked to groups that have come from the Twin Cities just to swim for the day, and when you're coming, you know, making a two-hour drive so you can come recreate here, it just makes you question what else is going on, and if it's really safe for our community to have that influx of people coming through it.
Okay, well, um, I think we've got our answers that we were looking for on that stuff, so. Um, get a copy of that. Do you like they need to read it? Yes. Alright, got a copy, resolution to, uh, support Worth County Conservation Board temporarily closing Keenan's Quarry property and Worth County Lake property to the public. Resolution number twenty-twenty dot oh-six dot fifteen dot one. Whereas the County Conservation Board is in charge of managing parks, recreational property located in Worth County, Iowa, including that property known as Keenan's Quarry, the property known as Worth County Lake, whereas the world is still experiencing the crisis of a pandemic and COVID-nineteen virus. And whereas both recreational areas have become an attractive nuisance, bringing much higher usage for both properties that has been experienced in the past. Whereas during the aforementioned pandemic, social distancing and safety precautions are called foreign limits incorporating social distancing are being recommended by both quarter of the governor of the state of Iowa, as well as Worth County Nurse Jessica Ryerson. And whereas a social distancing, safe precautions are not manageable at the current time, that social distancing restrictions are not being met and enforced voluntarily by the individuals making use of the recreational areas. And whereas the Worth County Sheriff, Worth County Director, Jim Hanson, have both recommended that Keenan's Quarry be temporarily closed to address safety concerns brought on by a large number of people congregating at Keenan's Quarry, and that the potential that the group might mitigate to Worth County Lake, should only Keenan's Quarry be closed. Whereas Dan Fink, Worth County Sheriff, Jessica Ryerson, Worth County Nurse, Mark Tomlinson, Director of, uh, Worth County Emergency Management, Mitch Hanson, Chief of Northern Volunteer Fire Company, and James Hanson, Worth County Conservation Department Head, have all recommended for the reasons above set. Both parks should be temporarily closed until rules and procedures are put in place to allow them to be operated safely. Now therefore be it resolved by the Worth County Board of Supervisors, that they support and endorse this decision by Worth County Conservation Board to temporarily close the public commencing, commencing on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty at eight AM. Keenan's Quarry and Worth County Lake, dated this fifteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty. I'll take a motion to approve this resolution. So go.
I will, sir.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll take a roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smady?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
It's passed. We are in support of Worth County Conservation Board closing these parks temporarily.
Thank you, guys. And then also, just to reiterate what's, it was said in the resolution, the reason Worth County Lake, the reason for that closure is we don't want the problem to migrate. You know, if the problem migrated to Worth County Lake, it's farther from the sheriff's office, and it's farther from, you know, emergency services, so that, we're kind of just trying to stay ahead of it a little bit, and try and not essentially have two parks inundated as opposed to just the one that had been, so.
Hey, Jim, did, uh, did, did Colton and Dustin get together and get some of the materials you need to put stuff up in?
Yes, Colton and Dustin left just a little bit ago, so.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure you got what you needed there.
Yep, thank you, Rich.
Okay. Um, next would be an ordinance to prohibit parking on gravel road four hundred and fiftieth street from east of Highway sixty-five until intersection with Pheasant Avenue. Um, Rich, I guess this is more near line. Are we going to be putting signage up along that? I'm assuming to force that?
What I've got is I've got, uh, our sign guy Colton put things together last week. We have four no-parking signs in our inventory, and I know that, uh, Jim said he had a couple, too, but what I found in our inventory was, uh, we have the no-parking signs, and then we had some placards also that say next X amount of miles. So on the, on the sign that we're gonna put right off of Highway sixty-five going east, it'll say no parking, and then underneath that, it'll have a little placard saying next two miles, because it's just a round number. Um, it's not a complete two miles from sixty-five to Pheasant, but, um, we didn't have the numbers to do one point five or whatever, and then coming off Pheasant, going to the west, we'll have a similar sign there, and then we can put a couple intermediates in between, so just as a reminder, and I don't, I think also I had, uh, I had Colton put on our, uh, homemade flag mounts, so we'll have flags hanging from them signs, too, so you can't, you shouldn't be able to miss them, so whenever that's ready to go, I think. Dan, is that satisfied? Would that be good enough for that for you?
Um, the more the merrier. I know Jeff would like to see him like every hundred yards, but we can only go with what we have. Uh, the only other thing would be Jim getting that one taken away from the gate that says, uh, no parking with that time limit, because that leaves it open.
That sign has been removed, and it, it's been replaced with a sign that says park closed, no admittance.
We can always put up more temporary, we just had, we had four temporary bases for now, we can add more later, but, you know, for the time being, we'll have them, that we'll have the major ones put up, so that people, we'll probably have one at sixty-five, and then one really close or just beyond the, the entrance to, uh, the park, and then same coming back the other way. And then we can add more when we get bases made.
Jim, did, are you gonna put anything in that second driveway?
Yes, we'll also be putting another sign that says park closed, no admittance.
Okay, um, as far as my group, we're gonna do warnings most of this week out there, go out and just give them warnings and probably look at citations.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan. I guess it looks like you guys have got it under control, and, and, uh, seems like the right thing to do for now. Um, is there any other? Who cares? All good out there? Okay. Um, we've got an ordinance here. Twenty sixteen dash six dash fifteen will be effective upon passage and publication. An ordinance regulating the parking on four hundred and fiftieth street in Worth County. Uh, being enacted by the Board of Supervisors of Worth County, uh, section on the purpose, this ordinance shall prohibit all vehicles from parking on four hundred and fiftieth street from east of Highway sixty-five to the intersection with Pheasant Avenue. Section two, stopping, standing, or parking, no person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle of any portion of the roadway. The road right-of-way or the ditch on four hundred and fiftieth street from east of Highway sixty-five to the intersection with Pheasant Avenue. Uh, penalties, section three, violations ordinance shall constitute simple misdemeanor punishable by a fine of sixty-five to six hundred and twenty-five, plus the applicable, the applicable court surcharge and cost, and or up to thirty days in jail. In addition, violators' vehicles are subject to be towed. Section four is a severity clause. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such injunction shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section five, effective date, ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law. So this ordinance, I'll take a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash six dash fifteen.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll do a roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smady?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
And I'll need to do a motion to waive the other two.
Waive the other two readings?
I'll make a motion, waive the other two readings.
It's a motion to waive the other two readings on this ordinance?
Second.
And there is a second. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll do a roll call vote as well. Abrams?
Aye.
Smady?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Uh, this ordinance is passed. Um, there will not be any parking on four hundred and fiftieth street between Highway sixty-five and Pheasant Avenue.
Jackie, just when you get a signed copy, if you can get one to me, so I can get it out to all the deputies, that'd be great.
Okay, um, well, good luck, guys. Hopefully this kind of gets things under control and, uh, makes that place safe, and I guess we'll reevaluate, um, whenever you guys want to, again, as you see things are fit, or, or timing is right. Um, next on the list, Jason Petersburg.
Morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Good. Last week, I talked a little bit about, um, Boyd Gaming, we'd been discussing with them, the grading around their existing building there. I did make some changes throughout another plan to them, um, late last week, that it sounds like they're agreeable to, which would involve basically filling, um, part of their lot in, bringing it up to grade a little bit better. Or, so it looks better, it'll blend in with the rest of the property. Um, they seem to be more comfortable with that as far as the drainage goes. Um, cost-wise, we need to raise a fire hydrant, it's already been installed, which isn't a big item, and then it would just be any new rock that we have to haul in to rebuild back their, their parking area. Ballpark, I'm estimating about five thousand dollars would be the cost associated with that. And I, I guess assuming that Boyd's gonna sign off on it, I would recommend that we proceed with, with making that change to the plan. Um, fill-wise, there's enough fill material available on site, there's, we'll be able to address that. Not having to truck any material, and there is an existing concrete bunker towards the north side of their lot twelve there. Um, I told them to try to move it. If it's on a foundation, it's not gonna happen. If it's just a slab on grade, they could try and move it, and local people said they didn't really care if they had it or not. They don't use it anymore other than to pile junk in, so we'll see what happens with that, but we may try and slide it up by the building if possible. Um, other than that, Other than that. Proceeding rather well out there. Uh, forecast doesn't look too bad here for what they're doing. I would think if we get a full week this week, that the pipe crews should be about done. Waterman got wrapped up last week. They should finish the thirty-six inch storm sewer today. And then they'll be down to just the storm sewer runs up into the subdivision itself. With two crews going, it won't take very long.
Yeah. Looking really good. I'm out there later on and, uh, check it out. I've been out there for about a week or so. Yeah. We, we changed a lot out there, yeah. Okay, so, um. Yeah, I guess as long as Boyd agrees to that, it seems like a way better idea than any retaining walls or anything like that. Seems like our chief is supposed to be Boyd.
Yep.
Questions for Jason?
No, no. Looking good.
Looks very good out there.
It's a good thought. I like that. You guys did a good job as a board and, and V and K, you guys did a good job out there. It's going to look really nice.
Sure has changed.
Question, Jason, are they going to bury that power line or are they just going to put a bigger pole line out there?
So there's a pole north of the lift station there, right by one oh five. They're going to leave that pole and then everything going south is going to be buried.
What about the one go east west? That's what I'm talking about.
No, they're not going to bury that one. They're going to put a taller pole in there. That's scheduled. They're going to take care of that so they can finish grading around that island.
Right, right by that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, okay, nothing else. Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Jane, is she on here? Do we have anything to do or is that going to get pushed on next? Or we have to wait on the?
Oh, I was thinking it was final plat and it's preliminary plat, so maybe just, uh, Jason needed to be a little.
Yeah.
So the planning and zoning recommended approval of the preliminary plat. Um, we have not presented the final plat to you yet, which reading your ordinance does not have to go back to planning and zoning unless there's. Major changes from what the preliminary was, there have been no changes. So right now, we need approval of the board. Um, of the preliminary plat. Not the final plat. There is no resolution for that. The final plat will come after the improvements are constructed, so I would say later this summer.
So we have a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
Yes.
So move.
I will second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for each town of Iowa, second edition, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Motion to carry. Um, also we got a recommended zoning change, but I think we gotta wait till they get it surveyed. Um, so we got an actual legal description on that before we can make a, a zoning change on the. It's an oil pro, uh, project. Okay, uh, reports. Report three hundred and twenty-six dollars, motion to approve the report.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, any payroll eligibility or salary changes? Security licenses?
Um, damage to your work.
Damage to your work? Uh, motion to approve the damage to your work. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Not motion to carry. Uh, department head discussion, is there anybody out there? Who wants to discuss? Anything on what's been going on or is everybody seeming to be doing okay with courthouse opening up or agree? I know you can't keep quiet, man. What's up?
Absolutely nothing.
Oh, that's good news. So glad everything's going well. Mark, you hearing anything different, anything going on? Or are we still kind of just running as we are?
No, we're, we're good here. There's, uh. The state is clearing out their warehouses rather than paying, uh, storage fee there. They're. Pushing out a thirty day supply of PPE to the districts and, uh. That will be. The, the districts, they'll each have the option of either storing it in their district or breaking it out on a county level. Um, I think our, the second district is going to probably get that mostly broke out. Each, each county is going to have a thirty day supply of. PPE that'll be used if, in case there's a second wave. That way, that'll give the, the state time to ramp up their operations again, should they need it to, or. If there's not a second wave in the fall or something, then down the road it can be used for whatever purpose it needs to be. Uh, it looks like that might come out this week. Otherwise, we're going to just, uh, looking at getting back into more of the normal things that EMA does, you know, as. It looks like the COVID response is kind of winding, winding down. Now they are. Uh, the state's looking to get out of being the, uh, PPE supplier. Uh, most of the supply sources have. Resumed normal capabilities and stuff. All that stuff is available on the open market again now, so. They, they prefer to get out of being the supplier.
Understandable. I suppose now that the suppliers have caught up, so it's probably a good thing. Okay, any else? Okay, thanks, Mark. Well, nobody, any other, any other department heads have anything else?
Just one thing for IT, G I S. Uh, we have seen. Uh, foreign attacks against our systems have probably increased by four times with the usually from this year to last, last year, this year. Um, we'll attribute most of that to the election year and COVID. Uh, some of it, I think, is because of some of the public unrest that we've seen, we've seen ramp up that. Um, the only thing I'm going to caution is there are all the department heads, you know, be on the lookout for fishing and spearfishing. Yeah, yeah. So, um, so far, you know, we're capacity is just fine. We're handling the impact pretty well. We're trying to shut down that foreign traffic as much as we possibly can. I expect that it'll only get worse as we get closer. So everybody just, you know, put your, put your finger at them.
Yep. You don't know it, don't answer it.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. And others for the department heads, the conservation board is going to put out a, a Facebook message. Later this morning here about the park closures. If any other counties, department heads or. Departments that manage a Facebook page, if you guys would want to share that, just so we've. Reach as many of our citizens as we can, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, I'm sure everybody will. Thank you. All right, supervisor weekly reports.
I have a conference, a Zoom conference with, uh, the board down in Mason City. Just did our usual business.
Quite a few things actually. First of all, I had a meeting with the sheriff and Jim and all the guys and discussed what we prepared here today. And then, uh, a safety meeting this week. Um, and it's highly encouraged by the IMWCA, you know, we have, uh, their contact person down there, Lisa Mark, that can come up and help us with programs. For better safety and things like that. She's willing to come up and do seminars or whatever we need. So and anybody that wants to use, she's also. You get some few free human resource stuff right now, if you want to talk to her, you probably already know that, so. Um, so a quick little quick meeting on that, you know, Brad's. I think we're going, we need to keep working forward on that and doing the best we can. Um, also had wellness committee this week. All department heads, make sure you check with your employees, get your, um. Get your assessment, health assessment done. We really appreciate that. That's one of the major things that'll get us our four percent discount for next year. I know there's some people fighting it on this, but. We need to get this done, otherwise I think we really need to make a change to our, make sure that we either. Employees are going to have to start paying for some of their health insurance or we're going to take something away because they don't want to participate. We got to get participation in this. Um, and then the last thing I board of health on Friday. This, uh, general meeting, Dr. Seema did bring up, yeah, as most of us know, we've lost a couple nurses. We've only had them for about. Less than six months. Getting hired, they leave, they leave for family insurance. So, um, we had a discussion on that and then Dr. Seema said we really do have pretty good insurance here. Yeah, we could do better than family insurance, I think. But, um, that's something we have to figure out. I think we'll be discussing insurance here sometime July or August, maybe with their company come on and talk to us, hopefully. That was their, their promise. We'll see if they follow through with a new provider or even want to say for us. So hopefully they'll. They'll follow through and give us some ideas on what we can do to improve things and save money at the same time, I'm hoping. So. We had that discussion. We did get another new county nurse. Can't remember, she came across the table, get her out. She's, she's doing good. She's, sounds like she's very interested in staying. She's more local. And, uh, should, should be good, I'm hoping. So hopefully we can keep somebody there for long term. So that was my week.
I didn't have any committee stuff. I just met with some landowners on a few issues around and. Most of those are pretty easy stuff to take care of, so. We can basically be the, the winter roads up there, so hopefully they can just, we got to keep, keep on them, keep them up to shape the best they can, so. Yeah, like I didn't have anything else other than that, so. Uh, is there any else that needs to come on the agenda for next week? Still pretty quiet. We're always social distancing until July. Okay, guess if there's nothing else coming for the board, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor, aye?
All right.
Aye, opposed? You can make a adjourn. Thank you, everyone.